Good evening, everyone. Let me go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruya Independent School District meeting to order. It is Thursday, January 27th, 2022. It is now 6:45 PM, and we are at the Ringo Doinb metric cafeteria. For purposes to determine quorum roll call, Mr. Jay Peña.
President.
Mr. Basilio D. Villarreal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Noi Castillo.
Present.
Mr. John E. Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Elizado Velazquez Jr. notified us that he had a prior obligation and was sorry he could not be here today. Not present, and myself, Eric Ramirez, present. Let the minutes reflect that we do have attendance for quorum purposes. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Peña. Jay Peña will help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Absolutely, thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the excellent Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on December 14th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I saw move, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. Do I have anyone signed up for public forum? Thank you, ma'am. Section five, Board Member Recognition Month, January 2022. The theme Rising Above, and reading the proclamation.
Good evening, school board members. Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lizette Martinez. I am Gruya High School Student Council Vice President, and I am elated to be joining you this evening. This year's theme for School Board Appreciation Month is Rising Above. This past year and a half has been difficult for all of us, but we are committed to rising above our obstacles, setbacks, worries, and fears. Despite all of the things that COVID has taken from us, we continue to move forward. We seek to rise above with hope, positivity, and lifting each other up. You, our school board, have been by our side every step of the way. This is your special day, school board members, and we would like to thank you for your dedication, leadership, and service to the children of Rio Grande City Gruya Independent School District. At this time, we would like to welcome Starr County Judge Eloy Vera, who will be reading the proclamation to declare January 2022 School Board Recognition Month in our community.
Good evening.
Evening, Judge.
I want to take my mask off. Hope you all don't mind.
Not a problem.
First of all, before I read the proclamation, I want to thank Mr. Peña for inviting me to be here this evening, and also to the board for allowing me to be here. This is certainly a very important function for me. In fact, I should be in Houston right now, but I canceled that. I'll leave early in the morning because I didn't want to miss this one. As people that know me know that I'm a great believer in education, and education begins with you, gentlemen. So, you know, on behalf of the county, we are truly thankful and indebted to you all for the work and the time that you have put into our school district, into our community, and more so into our students. I was talking to Mr. Villarreal a week or so ago, and I was telling him that I love what I do. I love my job, I really do. But the most rewarding position I've ever had was being on the school board. Because, in essence, you guys, through your administration, really have an impact into the future of our community, our state, and our country, and that is through the children that are getting educated in our community. So, again, I cannot thank you enough for the work that you all are doing. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Get to put on my glasses.
That's what happens when you get older.
I know. I know. You know, people say, "You look good for my age." And I said, "Yeah, you ought to see me in the morning." Anyhow, this proclamation was passed by the court, and I'll read it. Whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democracy society in an ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public expectations to the district. Now therefore, I, Eloy Vera Starr County Judge, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Rio Grande City Gruya Consolidated Independent School District Board of Directors and proclaim the month of January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month in Starr County, Texas. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an educational system that meets the needs of both today and tomorrow's children. In official recognition hereof, I hereby affix my signature this 27th day of January 2022. Thank you all so much, and again, thank you for your service and the work.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge Vera. At this time, we would also like to welcome Mr. Joel Villarreal, Mayor of the great city of Rio Grande City, who will be reading the proclamation.
Mr. Board President, distinguished members of the board, Mr. Superintendent of Schools, it is my honor and privilege to join you in celebration of School Board Recognition Month. So thank you for the gracious invitation. Now President John F. Kennedy's viewed education as the means of developing our greatest abilities because in each of us, there is a fundamental hope and dream to pursue an education and to pursue this idea that we can all be successful. Now, we recognize the value of a strong and well-funded education. So at Rio Grande City Gruya ISD, we pride ourselves. We place immense value in our future generations and leaders of tomorrow. We protect them, we guide them, we prepare them for a successful future beyond the halls of our institutions of learning. We recognize that value of a strong education. So with that, Rio Grande City is proud to be part of the school district, both Rio Grande City and Gruya because of the foundation, because of what it means for our children to prepare them for that future, and again, beyond the halls of our institutions of learning. So thank you for your service, your dedication, and your unwavering commitment to our future generations and leaders of tomorrow. Thank you, and we cannot say enough because without an education, without the foundation of having excellent schools, then a municipality cannot continue to thrive and prosper. It is very, very difficult. But we are proud to have such a system, a district, that truly cares about the students and prepares them for the future. So with that, Rio Grande City's proclamation reads... And I too need glasses. I guess you're getting younger every day, sir. Whereas it shall be the mission of the Rio Grande City Gruya ISD to provide all students with the best possible education, and whereas the school board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's education future, community's education future, and whereas the school board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's goals and maintains a two-way communication loop with all segments of the community, and whereas serving on a school board requires an unselfish devotion of time and service to carry on the mission and business of the school district, and whereas the school board must respond on behalf of the community to the educational needs of students, and whereas the school board voluntarily accepts the above-mentioned responsibilities. Now therefore, I, Mayor Joel Villarreal of the great city of Rio Grande City, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month in Rio Grande City, and I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world, and as Benjamin Franklin said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Thank you, congratulations, and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor Joel Villarreal. At this time, I would like to ask all school board members to please come forward. Now, we would like to present each board member with a plaque that reads, "Honoring our school board members for their dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of our community."
Mr. Noi Castillo.
Next, our campuses would like to present you with a token of appreciation for all that you do for the students and staff at RGC GISD. Beautiful hot air balloons have been carefully crafted for each and every one of you as a symbol that we will rise above. Giant thank you cards were made with lots of love by students and staff to remind you daily that you are appreciated. We also have some gift baskets filled with delicious goodies for you to enjoy. Board members, as we call your name, please come to the front. Mr. Eduardo Eric Ramirez.
Front and center.
Together we will touch the sky. The key to our success rests in people like you, who embody the spirit of greatness. Thank you for inspiring dedication and tremendous example to our district. Together we will touch the sky.
Be the sunshine that lifts everyone up like a hot air balloon. Wherever you go, no matter what the weather, you always bring your own sunshine. Thank you for being the sunshine that lifts everyone up like a hot air balloon.
We rise by lifting others. You always have an "it's going to be a great day" attitude. Thank you for boosting our morale and lifting up our spirits. Together we will strive to be the best.
What happened to the drone? Why did she get the gold one?
They got one last year.
It's like that now.
Why did he get the gold?
So it's like that.
It is like that. It is like that.
Mr. John Pope IV.
John Pope.
You dream big, work hard, and stay focused. Thank you for aiming high to help move our district forward. We are proud of the work that you do, the person that you are, and the difference you make. Thank you for having a clear vision for our district and setting your mind on things above. Don't just fly, soar. You are strong, courageous, and know that you can do anything you set your mind to. Thank you for inspiring us to soar towards our goals and dreams of success. At this time, our three awesome high schools will be presenting each board member with the token of their appreciation. Early College High School.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Those are beautiful jackets you've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Hello.
Thank you very much, Mike. I appreciate it, okay? Thank you very much.
What I got, sir.
Right now, you can tell. You can do real well.
Gruya High School.
Bad buddy of the cap. Don't put it to him.
Also, Ms. Adelina Villarreal would like to introduce some of our district's career and technical education staff and also A.S.A. after-school centers on education staff who did an outstanding job creating and making some items for our board members.
Good afternoon, everyone, and congratulations on being the month of Rising Above and of School Board Recognition Month. I'm going to go ahead and present to you, I'm going to hand it over to some of my career and technical education teachers and some A.S.A. staff and their students. I'm very proud of them and their parents for allowing them to be in our programs of the district. Peter, would you like to go ahead and help me out?
Go, Peter.
Good evening, all board members and superintendent. My name is Pedro Martinez. I'm a CTE strategist. I want to introduce two of the finest welding CTE students we have. This is Mr. Juan Science from Gruya High School. I also have Mr. Alan Ivanias from Rio High School.
On behalf of all CTE welding classes, we want to thank you for your support. We want to present you with a token of appreciation that was made at our welding shop. It is a plaque made out of 11-gauge steel sheet metal. We hope you like it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, son.
Thank you very much, son. I appreciate it. We need to see the doctor, buddy. We need to see the doctor.
Yes, I think so.
Now, I have Ms. Cecilia Martinez. She's one of our A's students from Veterans Middle School. She'll be giving out another token that was made.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Martinez.
Hi, my name is Danali Aviña.
These two students are A's students from Veterans Middle School. They will be presenting another little token that was made by them as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Where's the hat, man? Put it on, I like it.
And last but not least, we have Mr. Umar Inojosa representing Gruia High School, and Jessica Elder that also assisted. They're A's professionals. Umar is a professional chef, and so is Jessica. She's a Wilton Certified Instructor, and they helped me out with the A's program and also CTE. And they're gonna go ahead and have a token of appreciation. And from all the career tech staff, we also have some gift baskets that are right there. Umar, go ahead.
Dessert. Dessert's always a good thing, so... My students helped me out with some cakes that we're gonna present to you right now.
Again, thank you very much, son. My mother used to make cakes and I used to do frosting all the time with her finger. You've been here, haven't you? Yes, I have. I don't like the cake. I like the frosting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. All your cakes are sugar-free.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. We would also like to present each board member with a personalized customs-laid photo plaque for you to display proudly on your desk and a cutting board that has the district logo and each board member's name laser engraved.
The red box breaks, so you'll be careful without it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Maybe I should get the cutting board out so I can see it. So we can take a short picture with a cutting board. Oh, it's a cutting board. You're like the guy who...
You don't?
Here we go. Now I'll take a picture.
Like, it has all stuff in the back there? No cover? And more stuff, wow.
Again, thank you for your dedication, leadership, and service to the children of Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District. We hope you continue to enjoy your special day. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us for refreshments and a delicious grab-and-go meal made by the RGC GISD Child Nutrition Department. We also have entertainment from our national award-winning Mariachi Cascabelle and Mariachi Gruia de Plata. Enjoy.
Is he thanking, no? Everybody sit down. Everybody left. Let them play, don't just... Do we let them play? Let them play? Better hold the nerve to sit down? Hey, thank you for that. You wanna say thanks before they get... Pacho. Sir, thank you. And let them do it? Let them do it. We'll do it afterward in the morning. How come I didn't get a personal touch like that? That was the nice note that she does.
[Singing] For all the love, this is the end of the world.
Yes, then applause for the national award-winning Mariachi, please. Another round of applause for the national award-winning Mariachi, please.
Well, I didn't even announce the break. Right.
Item number one.
All right, we're back on the record. Seven fifty-two PM. I know a lot of the students have left, but let's give another round of applause. How nice was that? As far as the gifts and tokens of appreciation, I think John put it best. I think we got more here today than we did on actual Christmas Day. It's going to be hard taking it away, and Jay already ate some of it. So, you all did yourselves. Thank you so much for everything. The students and the parents and family, the support staff, the support system they have at home, to be here tonight, just to do that for us, means, at least to me, I'm sure, I speak for the rest of my colleagues, that it means a lot to us. Actually, I spoke to Mr. Benya Superintendent in private, and I wanted to scratch it completely, the whole recognition of the school board, just because everything is going on. And, you know, we could talk about different things, there's so many of them. And I know they did the theme, and they called it Rising Above, but we rise above because of you all. This isn't about us. This isn't... Half of us don't even like the, you know, to be honest, we're not about the recognition. It's public service for us. We love what we do. We love to see the product of our actions and decisions that we make as a board, but at the end of the day, you guys are the ones that, you're the heroes out there. You're the ones on the floor, and there's a lot of things going on, and you never seem to crumble, even when there's insurmountable, or what seems to be insurmountable obstacles, you keep going forward. You keep, not to be cheesy, rising above. So, it's not us rising above, it's you all, and you all make us look so darn good. So, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for everything you did today, and I'll let, you know, individual board members speak, but I know that they share the sentiment. So, thank you all again, from me personally, for everything you do. Thank you. Anybody want to add something to that?
I'm sharing the same. I was going to say thank you all very much. It doesn't mean I'm going to share what I got. But thank you all so much.
The only thing I want to say is to other people, all the kids, all the students, all the RGC, G C I S D family, thank you. And it's a privilege to represent each and every one of you, and the people who took time to give us some gifts, thank you very, very much. And young lady, don't ever take off that hat, that's a beautiful hat, okay?
Ms. Noe?
I want to thank all of you. I know that all of us here feel very appreciated with everything that you all gave us here tonight, and, you know, you're the ones that are appreciated for all you do. You guys do all the work, and, you know, we come here once a month, and we rely on all of you all to do the work that you do every day with our kids, and you guys are, you know, teaching the kids for tomorrow. I do, I love being here to serve my community, and without you all, there would not be us. So, thank you for everything.
And before, before I continue, I promise I would say thank you to Lizeth Martinez, what a job, she didn't even look nervous, it's not easy to come up there and speak, and she was a pro at it, so, I know there was other support system in place, so everybody involved, but she emcees, I wanted to give her a personal shout out, and thank you to her and her family for doing that. Okay, moving on to section six, reports and information, item one, update on students' staff highlights. I believe it's a video.
It's the highlights one. Good evening, Mr. President, members of our amazing school board, Superintendent, everybody here in attendance, and everybody watching live, thank you so much for your kind words to all of our board members, I think every, the highlight of everything that you all said was the word selfless. You all do everything for our benefit without asking for any recognition, and that goes a long way. Thank you so much for everything you do, gentlemen. We are truly blessed here at RGC GISD, as evidenced by our students that were here today, our staff, our principals, our administration, everybody that makes up RGC GISD, we are blessed to have something wonderful happening every single day at our campuses. It would, we would be here all night if we could actually play a video that highlighted every single thing that happened in the month of December, but we've taken a little bit of it into consideration, and we put together a little video to highlight what would have been in the month of December, and hopefully, we look forward to many more things happening in the coming months. Once again, thank you to our board members, hopefully you enjoy the video.
... at Real Grande City Gruya ISD, and January is shaping up to be just as great. Our superintendent math challenges have been extremely successful. These challenges were designed to help prepare our students for the upcoming star exams, and we are proud of all of their progress. Students from all of our high school and middle school Margachi programs came together to put on a spectacular performance. AC2E Elementary hosted their first-ever STEM fair, where students showcased the different STEM projects they have worked on throughout the semester. RGC GISD students, teachers, and administration attended the unveiling of the new spot for the brand-new Gruya Middle School, which will be located close to Gruya High School. Our elementary music program had their first performance at the Christmas tree lighting on Britton Avenue. Students from all of our elementary schools participated and had a sensational time. The RGC GISD tech team goes above and beyond for our students every day, and we are so thankful for everything they do for our district. The first annual bunch of festival of lights was a complete success, our students, staff, and community had a great time enjoying the lights and entertainment. The Gator and Rutler basketball teams had the distinct opportunities to play at the AT&amp;T Center in San Antonio, Texas. Both teams showcased their skills and had a great experience. The RGC GISD CTE department hosted the TPSTA competition for career and technology students at Gruya High School. CTE students competed from all over the valley in different first responder categories. The RGC HS visual arts program put on their production of the Disney musical Aladdin Jr., where students showcased their singing, dancing, and acting skills. Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr. hosted a luncheon as a special end-of-year treat for central office staff, school administrators, and support staff. And our General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary hosted the first UIL event for the 2021-2022 school year, where students from all of our elementary campuses competed in different UIL events. Remember, at Real Grande City Gruya ISD, we strive to give you, our students and our staff, an experience of a lifetime.
Okay, and then, item number two, report on construction projects, Mr. Asuna?
Once again, we put together another video of the status or the progress of some of the projects that we have so far. A lot of beautiful things are happening.
Okay, and then, item number two, report on construction projects, Mr. Asuna?
Once again, we put together another video of the status or the progress of some of the projects that we have so far. A lot of beautiful things are happening. A little bit of a further update, I know you all saw the putting green at Gruya High School. We were informed this morning that the putting green, as you all saw, had gravel on top, it's already been outfitted with a felt, so we, it's not up to date on the video, but as of this morning, the putting green has already been, you know, formatted, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Nice, thank you, Mr. Asuna, thank you. Item number three, report on BEESL education policies and budget procedures, Mrs. Avinia?
Good evening, Mr. Eric Ramírez, school board president, members of the board, Mr. Adolfo Peña Superintendent of Schools and audience present. The bilingual ESL budget procedures manual was recently created as recommended by the business office to have a manual in place to prepare for future audits addressing bilingual ESL budget policies and procedures. The manual addresses the following tasks. One, program overview. Two, bilingual ESL eligibility criteria. Three, student identification procedures and LPAC. Four, provisions of services and monitoring. Five, reclassification exit procedures. Six, program evaluation. Seven, campus-level services. Eight, TEA side-by-side budget, and in the appendix, the LPAC monitoring and data services. You can also see the state bilingual allotment given to each campus from the business office, as well as Title III, Part A, federal grant monies given to our district, and a breakdown of how this grant money is distributed between our department's needs and campus allocations on a per-student basis. Our goal this evening is to make the school board aware of the development and need to have a bilingual ESL budget manual with policies and procedures. At this time, if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer on behalf of Mr. Jesús Martinez, our bilingual ESL director.
Thank you. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, I appreciate it. All right, there's no report needed for items four through nine, so let's proceed to section seven, recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items, all of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. We have item number one, consider taking possible action on donations to Real Grande City Gruya ISD. Is there a motion or any discussion on item one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agendas presented in our board packet, that would be item one and item two.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
So, a second by Mr. Pope, any discussion? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. On item three, there is a correction that needs to be made before we entertain a motion, it should read, consider taking possible action on travel requests from ACE program, and under A, it should be one ACE director, two strategists, one industrial specialist to attend the foundation's beyond-school hours 2022 training in Carribe Royale, Orlando, Florida, February 22nd, 2022 through February 26th, 2022.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item three with the corrections, item four, item five, item six, item seven, and item eight with some discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varell to approve item three with the corrections, and items four, five, six, seven, and eight, is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo, discussion?
Yeah, real quickly, on the item eight, I also want to include the addendum, which I did not include, the addendum that was presented to us, and just make sure, Mr. Lopez, that everything is the proper way within budget, within bidding, with everything is proper as far as these items that we're approving tonight, correct? Everything's within budget, and everything has been bided out for less than $50,000, correct?
The response is positive? Response is yes. Okay, sorry, just wanted to put that down the record. Okay, there's a second by Mr. Castillo, is there any further discussion required in any of those items? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number nine, discussion, consideration, and possible action on a warning street drainage project at Fort Ringo property to the lowest bidder. Is there a motion or any discussion on item nine?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item nine as presented, with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Second by Mr. Pope, okay, discussion, Mr. Varell?
Just real quickly, about on this thing, everything's good to go, right?
Yes, sir, we have reviewed that, and it's a sole source, sole source provider, and it's also, I think it's not to exceed $50,000, I believe the quote was under that.
Can you tell us really, real quickly, Mr. Varell, just what they found so far, so maybe we can get a good idea of where we're at?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña Superintendent. I'm gonna just backtrack real quick here, the drainage and the paving here at the fort, it was part of the bond project, bond construction that was approved. Unfortunately, when we started moving forward with this project, we found out in talking to engineers that it was going to be way, way over budget. So, we started meeting Mr. Peña with his administrative team, and Mr. Salazar, and we ended up getting very lucky that we contracted Mr. Luis Falcon, and he started clearing out some of our drainage issues. Our main priority was here, right across us, by the auditorium, and he did an excellent job here, and what he was limited to do under $5,000, he was able to clear out everything here with the auditorium, the Ramiro Viegas gym, between the special ed, the nursing office, and basically, we were kinda wanting to go with engineers, but what we found out is, it was just decades and decades of it not being cleaned. So, what Luis Falcon has come to find out is, everything is just so plugged up, we have so much trash in there, we have a lot of grass, a lot of roots, things that can be done without having to go the route of an engineer, you know, bringing in those type of teams, and, you know, just in getting an engineer to come and oversee and to tell us what we found out, it was gonna be way over $50,000, almost $100,000. So, we feel that, you know, in getting Mr. Luis Falcon, you know, and we, it kinda goes hand in hand, we have an MPC project, as you are aware, and our civil engineer could not move forward with that project without knowing about the drainage. So, if we had not started with that drainage, fixing the drains, we would have been handcuffed with the MPC. So, it worked out very well that the civil engineer said, I need to see all the drains, I need to see how deep they are, I need to see where they run, and if we would not have started with this, you know, with, here over the break, we would not have had those answers. So, again, it's something where, as a district, we're going to save a lot of money, and everything is getting cleared slowly but surely.
Let me ask, were the drains pretty much plugged up?
They were completely plugged up. I know, Mr. Peña, literally, we went out there and walked the area, and if they would not have told us exactly where the drains were, we didn't even see some of them, that's how bad they were covered up. You know, we would, we would have thought we were just stepping on, you know, on dirt, you know, so they had to kinda, you know, the good thing is, he's from here, he knows the fort. Again, going back to the MPC, we had another little issue where he needed to see some drains, the good thing about Mr. Falcon, I called him, and within an hour, he was here. And he also walked the fort with us, and our civil engineer, and basically told us where everything was. So, to answer your question, everything was completely plugged up.
Where does that water drain into?
I'm sorry, sir?
Where does that water drain into?
We, we, right now, he has found two areas, one leads to behind the fire department, and that one is gonna need some work eventually, because there's already big trees there, there's, it's just, if, if he doesn't tell us, we don't, we have no idea that it's, that it's back there. And then, there's another one that leads right past, between ACE Elementary and the transportation, we have a little area there that's, you know, it's, there were some trees and everything, we have one that leads out there, and that also needs some work. So, one of the things that Mr. Falcon has brought to our attention, because it is so old, some of the cement boxes, they've basically dissolved, and, and there's nothing, so that's something that we need to look at here for the future. But, in talking to our maintenance director, that's something that we can do in-house. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, a second by Mr. Pope, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item ten, discussion, consideration, and possible action to deny bid number 22-27 on new Gruya Middle School land clearing. Is there a motion or any discussion on item ten?
Mr. President, I move we approve item ten as presented, with some discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, let's proceed with discussion, I believe, Mr. Lopez?
Can I ask, why are we declining it?
Okay, again, Mr. Varell, our, our civil engineer led the bidding process when it came to that project, and he also sent us an email recommending that it be denied because of the price that was being charged to do that work.
So, how much were they charging us, sir? For how many acres?
For about 27 acres.
So, about $1,000 an acre, you're clear?
About $1,700 an acre.
Okay. Yeah. Any further discussion?
$10,700 acre, not a...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
$10,700.
I'm sorry, yes.
$10,000.
Yes, thank you.
The math was a little bit off.
Yes, I'm sorry. I know, and, and again, just to, kinda, what the civil engineer, we found out after the fact, but what he, what, what he did is, when he did the bid, he went out there and got companies to basically, you know, knock down, clear everything, but to get everything out, truckload after truckload after truckload. So, we got some calls, again, after the fact, that the, you know, I guess the smarter thing to do is, I guess, you know, people that have ranches and, you know, ranchland in the area, the best thing to do... area, the best thing to do is to burn. As you're, you know, cutting and bringing it down, you're putting it in piles and burning. So that was not, you know, again, we found out after the fact.
Ms. Robles, are you in accord with, with denying this one? I hope you are.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Lopez. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Castillo, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion passes. Item 11, discussion, consideration, and possible action to higher JF trenching and paving construction to clear and level the ground for the New Gruia Middle School not to exceed 50,000. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 11?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 11 as presented with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Proceed with the discussion, Mr. Varela.
Can you just give us, fill us in?
And, and basically, this is very simple. We went from possibly paying 215, over 215,000, down to 45,441. And again, Mr. Jorge Falcone reached out to, and I'm sorry, I, I, I don't remember the name of our county fire marshal. Is it Mr. Moreno? I'm not sure if it's Mr. Moreno. He reached out to Mr. Moreno. Mr. Moreno gave him the green light, pending board approval to get the permits to, to burn there on site. And so everything's ready to go pending board approval. But again, it was just too good of a deal to, you know, go from over 215,000 to 45,441.
Mr. Garcia, the architect, are you in accord with his decision?
He was, okay, I couldn't see him. I was going to mention him earlier. Mr. Garcia.
Are you in agreement with this, this decision?
Yes, yes, sir. I talked to Jorge Falcone about what he was going to do.
Close the, move the mic closer. Thank you.
We talked to Jorge Falcone and it appears that what he's going to do is going to satisfy the progress that we need to, to get it, you know, start to get it, get it leveled.
So what he's going to do is enough for you to just, to do what you need to do then, as far as building?
Basically, root plow it and clean it up, break it up and, you know, burn it up.
Any further discussion?
How, when would they start and how long would it take them to finish?
The start has to do, the start has to do with the contract, but I think they're ready to go.
He's ready to start as soon as board approves. And I reach out to him and we go through our business office. He's ready to start as soon as possible. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Lopez and Mr. Garcia. There was a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider take possible action on resolution regarding the use of COVID-19-related emergency sick leave. I will motion to temporarily table this item for further discussion in executive on the personnel. And then we can vote on it when we get back outside an executive. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider take possible action on amendment of TASB policy, AB local district name. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 13?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 13, 14, and 15 with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Varela.
Yeah, the only discussion is on the considering possible action, high school end of the year.
It's item 15, Ms. Morris.
Okay, the only thing is that I think, I don't know, we, I think we have a great PR department, but I saw somewhere here where they're going to charge us $3,000 and some dollars to do a video, $3,800 to do a video. Couldn't our PR department do that video or not?
Very good question.
It's a question, I would assume so. We have always used this particular vendor for the senior video. I guess that would be an option. I don't know.
I just, I don't know, you tell, where's?
Ms. Sona.
Ms. Sona, can you do that video and answer? Because 3,800 seems like a lot of money. It's a top 10 banquet, correct?
Correct.
And how many students in the top 10 banquet?
Probably about 80.
Eighty?
Yes.
So we're, we're looking at about 10, 20, 30, 40, 40 some dollars per, for a kid? Can you do it, sir, or not? Okay, then, then my, my, I, well, we'll approve it and I'm just saying, if we can do it in-house, why not? And I'm not trying to say, but 3,800 seems like a lot of money to do a video for 80 kids, I think. I don't know.
That's fair.
That's an RTX 3090 processor right there.
I don't know what that means, buddy.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you could allocate that.
They understood each other. All right, any further discussion required? Thank you, Ms. Morris. There was a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 16, consider take possible action on teacher incentive allotment cohort E. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 16?
I saw move, Mr. President, with some discussion. I don't know what this means.
Sure, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Mr. Varela, you may proceed with discussion. I have, Ms. Morris again.
What does it mean?
The teacher.
I read it, but I don't understand what it means.
Okay, the teacher incentive allotment, if you see there, we put an attachment. We kind of gave you the summary of what it is. It is a program through the state, of course. We would have to apply. It is a one-year process. So we've been working on the application process since about probably like August or September. And it's a multi-step process. But if we are approved, we submit our application in April 15th. Am I correct, Ms. Benitez? She's our chairperson. We will be submitting our application on April 15th. If we are approved, that's just the first step. The second step would be that we would gather data for two years, then we would submit that data through Texas Tech, who is the approved vendor for the state. Once we, our application is approved and we gather two years of data, then our teachers would qualify to receive one of these distinctions, recognized exemplary or masters. In addition to that, as part of the TIA, we're also working with the HR department with Dr. Salinas and Mr. LT Guzman to begin a cohort of teachers to get board certified, national board certified, meaning that while we're going through the process of the teacher incentive allotment, it is a long process, but it's money that's awarded to the district to incentivize teachers who are performing well, showing growth. But in order to incentivize those who don't want to wait for the process, it may be are in a non-tested area that may not be part of our proposal that we're submitting to TA, these teachers would do independent work. If they pass the board certification exams, then they would receive their certification to get their TIA money before we would finish the process. So I know Dr. Salinas is working on a small cohort and we've had teachers already interested in the process because there are different steps that they would have to go through to get the national board certification. So if you look there on page, on the second page, it has what the, what the incentives look like. So when you look at a recognized teacher, their allotment would be from 3,000 to 9,000. And the reason they vary so greatly, I need to explain, is depending on the campus where the teacher is working, that's how that is awarded. So if they are on a high need campus, meaning that that particular campus maybe has more economically disadvantaged children, has maybe a lower rating for the campus, well, those are considered higher ratings. So that teacher's bonus might be a little bit higher than at a, at a campus where a teacher works that's an A campus. Well, those children will not exhibit as much growth and not need as much. So depending on the campus, that's how those numbers are justified. If you look at exemplary, you're looking at 6,000 to 18,000. And of course, masters would be 12,000 to 32,000. The reason that Mr. Peña has wanted us to pursue this is because our neighboring school districts do already offer this. Roma is also working on the process. They've hired a consultant to do this. La Hoya already offers it. And what it does, it kind of helps teachers who are getting ready to retire or are thinking about retirement, this gives them those good years, those best five years. And it helps them, you know, build up their retirement because if they're a teacher who is able to show growth and able to grow their children, then they begin to incentivize themselves for the work that they do with our children, so.
So this is just one step. We've still got a couple of years left.
Yes, we still have three years left. This would be our first step. So Ms. Benitez said, one of the things we need to do as part of the process is we needed to inform the board that we were moving forward. And of course, we needed the blessing of the board to move forward and submit our application by April 15th.
With that said, Mr. President, I call for the question.
All right.
One last comment, Mr. President. Ms. Morris, so if we get approved after this year and in the, in the near future, the next two, three years, where would the funding come from?
From the state.
Right, nothing for the district.
Yeah, and there'll be extra money for all teachers.
For the teachers.
Not all teachers.
Yes, 90% would, we would get the money for those teachers if our plan is passed and our data is not skewed. So we're also working with principals right now, trying to make sure that they're calibrating and that they're doing the proper thing with a, with a T-test instrument. So we're training our principals to be able to do a, you know, what is it, I guess, a reliable job because our data should match our, the way that we appraise our teachers. So we need to make sure that those two are closely aligned and that there's no skew. That way, when we do gather our data next year and the following, because we would submit application, gather data next year and the following, we would not receive money until three years. But that money goes 90%, you can give 100%, but up to 90% has to go directly to the teachers. And the district can keep 10 for administrative or to keep the program going or train people or whatnot.
That was a good addition. All right, thank you so much again. There was a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Castillo, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 17, consider take possible action on memorandum of agreement between MDS Decatur Township and RGC GISD for TSL E3 Plus grant. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 17?
I saw move, Mr. President, with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Varela.
What is this about?
This is a binding, of course, memorandum. We were contacted sometime in the summer. I don't remember exactly the timeframe, but it was sometime during the summer about wanting us to participate in a, it's a countrywide or nationwide grant through the Texas Department of Ed. They were looking for another school in Texas and we had been doing work with Insight Education Group. So I guess with our work through them and interacting, they thought we were a good fit for the grant, so they invited us. But we had to provide some, I think some of you wrote letters of support for us, for the district. We did have to reach out to Congressman Quaya, Senator, the State Representative Ryan Guillen. So we had to get different communities, different businesses, board members to support it. We also had to provide data. We also had to research what our retention looked like, how many people we were losing, what our attrition rate was, and then of course, submit student data. So we gathered all the data, submitted everything. And of course, I have to give credit where credit is due. Ms. San Juanita Olivares and Ms. Benitez helped me kind of like turn this around really quickly. And then Karen Garcia gave us the information we needed. So we submitted all this data and we waited. So then around October, I told Mr. Peña, they just contacted me. I said, the lady told me she had good news and bad news, but I don't know what that means. So I called back and she says, well, the bad news is I'm no longer working for Insight, but the good news is you all were awarded part of the grant. So it's a $21 million grant. It's for the next three years. We're not the owners of the grant, so I want to make sure that you all are aware of that. The owners of the grant are the MSD Decatur Township, which is a small school district, probably half the size of ours. We've been to visit. They've been here to visit. They met Mr. Peña, they met Dr. Salinas, Ms. Robles. They were here. They've visited a couple of school districts. And then we were in North Carolina on Monday and we met, we had our first advisory meeting. And basically what it is, it allows for these six school districts to come together, different quarters throughout the year, to kind of see, okay, what is it that you all are going through at your campus? What are you all doing? So it gives you the ability to network, of course, all being paid through the grant. So every time we travel, every time they travel, it's paid through the grant. In addition, they will be providing money, very similar to what we talked about in TIA, but this is called TSL. So what they will be doing is they will be incentivizing teachers that are called lead teachers. So we will have some positions that'll be opening for lead teacher. We will have some teachers that are going to be called collaborative teachers. And then they're probably the only ones that incentivize campus leadership. So we will be incentivizing all of our principals, assistant principals, deans, anyone who is doing any kind of appraising, because that's what it's about. It's a coaching component that says, okay, T-test is saying, these are things you need to work on. Well, that's great. But then the next step is who's working with this teacher, with these teachers to improve on those things that are being outlined in the T. So it kind of gives us the next step that we can afford and we don't have money to do, but they're able to give us that money so that we can pay teachers who may do well, and those would be called collaborative teachers. The program incentivizes them, gives them a stipend of $4,000 to $6,000, depending what we decide. And that, that incentive for that teacher is so that they can coach and build other teachers that may be experiencing difficulty or may need that additional support. But it incentivizes the ones who are being successful.
How much was the grant?
We are going to be getting like for this year, the grant was 20 million total, but for this year, we're getting a little bit under $1 million. They will also be hiring, or we will be hiring a project coach, which means that we will have a full-time administrator that will be running this grant. That administrator will go through a series of interviews. I think Doc will be presenting that information to you all in, in closed session because we need to advertise for that position. And we don't get to hire completely. It'll be Mr. Peña, myself, Dr. Salinas, and the representative from Decatur. And they will be asking different questions. And then they have like a practical interview. So that project coach director will have to go through a, where they kind of say, okay, here's the problem. Now go solve it and present to us via video. So, because that's a big component of the, of the grant, that we do the coaching, that we video, that we reflect, and we improve. So it's like a three-step process even for the hiring. And they pay the salary of, salary plus benefits for that individual.
So we're going to be incentivizing certain teach, I mean, certain employees of our district.
Probably about 40, 40 teachers. We're looking at about 40 teachers when you look at all the numbers. And then of course, all of our administrators, assistant principals.
At no cost to the district, correct?
No cost to the district.
Very good.
All right, there being no further discussion. There was a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 18, consider take possible action on RGC GISD early college high school designation application for 2022 through 2023 school year. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 18?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 18 through 22. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required?
Just a real quick discussion. Everything's within budget on this, Ms. Robles. Everything's proper as far as being able to buy all these things and things of that nature, correct? Yes?
And the answer again, affirmative? All right, thank. Any other discussion required? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, a second by Mr. Peña, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 23, consider take possible action on after-school center on education, ACE program for a drone pilot class through RGV vocational services for Gruia Middle School for spring and summer semesters.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28.
Mr. Varela, I believe we have an issue with item 26, so you can limit it to other, besides that one, besides item 26. We have an issue with item 26 that we need to discuss, but you can move for the other.
Let me go, okay, I have, well, let's go, let me approve item 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28, and I'll leave 26 out.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 23, 24, 25, 27, and 28. Is there a second to that motion?
Second is amended.
There's a second by Mr. Peña as amended. Is there any discussion required on any of those items?
I'll abstain from item number 28.
Mr. Castillo will be abstaining from item 28. Any other discussion required? There being none, all is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign with the exception of Mr. Castillo abstaining on item 28. Motion passes. On item 26, there's some bidding issues that's still negotiation. The administration is not ready to present today or tonight. So I'm going to motion to table that item until the next board meeting. There's a second by Mr. Peña. All is in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 29, discussion, consideration, and possible action to determine the delivery contract method and the replacement of the VIP seating at Joe R. Sanchez Stadium, handicap seating, and staircase to home press box.
Mr. President, item 29, I remove, I move that we approve item 29, 30, and 31, and 32, because they basically have the same, same verbiage.
Yes, they do.
So I'm going to say that we approve this motion and refer to Mr. Baltasar and see where you go.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
Second on motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Mr. Baltasar, anything we need to add on the record?
Just that because these, these items are over $50,000 and they do require engineering, it's the best practice to go out and get them either, either through a co-op with a couple of bids or to request bids directly. So that's going to be up to administration to decide which route to take. But when I saw it, because the numbers are so big, it's again, and they need engineering. To me, that's always, you know, we need to make sure that we're transparent with that. If we ever get audited, we either did, either bid within the co-ops or we just go out for bids and advertise it. out for bids and advertise it, uh, because, again, it's, these are large quantities.
Very fair.
Well, uh, Mr. Peña, I guess, follow what Mr. Baltasar Salazar says. Uh, on these things, whatever his guidance is, and we just follow what he's basically saying. And I don't know what that is, but, uh, purchasing the apartment yourself and Mr. Baltasar get together, and whatever the mode of, of getting these things, uh, follow it, basically, whatever your recommendation is.
Okay, right, because we have a local policy that says that the board has to approve the process, so we're either gonna go out, we're either gonna go out for bids, or we're gonna go through a call-up with, with the caveat that there's gonna be bids.
So, let me ask Baltasar, would we better give authorization to the superintendent on these things?
Y- yes, but the board has to approve it.
Okay, so how?
You can designate the, you can make a motion to designate the superintendent to, uh, to choose between either the bid process or the co-op, with the understanding that the co-ops would also have to, we'd also have to have some bids, and then that would be bit board approval.
So, then I'm, let, on item twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, then I make a motion to?
To, to au- to authorize the superintendent to decide whether he's gonna go through a co-op with at least three bids or to just bid the project out.
So, he'll have the discretion to do one of the two or?
And then bring it back to us, correct?
No, no, the, once you approve it, then you're approving either one of them. So, you're giving the superintendent and, uh, and purchasing that discretion.
The benefit of the co-op is we're gonna have more vendors to choose from? Are there vendors that have the experience with a particular project?
Right, because we're talking about items, I believe they're athletic items, they're stadium items, so you have different co-ops that provide them. So, if we, instead of just going to one co-op, we go to four co-ops, maybe we get one from each, or if we bid it out and let everybody know, it just gives the district more, more of a, an open avenue to get more bids, because these are stadium seats.
Let me ask you a question, like, co-ops, are they really bids or are they quotes? Because I know that from co-ops, they're state-approved vendors. We can basically go to state-approved vendors and buy things from, correct?
We, we can, but again, because of the quantity, because of the amount, and we're talking about three, four hundred thousand dollars here, it's better to get, I mean, there's, it's not gonna hurt us.
All right, to get three or four quotes, that's not a problem. But I, I'm saying, when you say bids, that means you have to advertise it, put it in paper and stuff like that. So, what I'm, I'm saying, when you go to, to state-approved vendors, are you asking to go to bids or are you asking to go to quotes?
You can ask them for quotes, because normally, all of these co-ops have twenty different athletic providers, or ten different scoreboards, for example, and so they'll go to all of them, and out of those ten, you may get two or three, and they, they know who's, who's in the business of them.
And because if we go to bids, correct me wrong, that we have to put it on the advertising, we have to do this, and, and quotes from, from state-approved vendors, uh, to get three